As Bob O’Rourke would say after that, play ball. So I’d like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of April 5th, 2022. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember.
And make a brief announcement about accessing the meeting.
I’m sorry. Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Why is it that?
Councilmember Soto. Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Here.
Excuse me. In order to participate in the City Council Meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID code 89365941131. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom Meeting Portal. If you are using a telephone, please press the star nine on your keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Thank you. First item this evening is the presentation of Hometown Heroes, and Mr. Posada will be doing that. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us back again. And while, thank you, everybody, for coming and thank you for supporting the Hometown Heroes program. Tonight, we’re going to be looking at 34 banners that’ll be going up this week, at the end of this week. And we have some great individuals to recognize. This class of heroes, as we’ve done this last time around, we did include some of our essential workers, and we’re real happy to have some of those essential workers from our education community on our list tonight. So we have 34. Mayor, will you be joining us down here to hand out certificates?
Do you want me here or there?
With Mr. Smitherman. Thank you.
Thank you.
While the mayor works her way down, we have Dennis Smitherman, our interim Assistant Recreation Parks Director, will help us hand out the banners or the certificates. And bear with us, we’ll try and get everybody up front so we can get a picture with the mayor. So if you have someone here to take a picture, come on up with your hero as they’re introduced. We’re going to start with our first presentation to Virgie Alacron, Essential Worker in Education, nominated by the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. And Superintendent Garcia, is Ms. Alacron able to get through the crowd? Oh, here she comes. Come on down. Picture? Photo op, please, yes.
I sure like to get them all together, because certainly we could do all of them.
Maybe afterwards?
Do you want to do it now or afterwards?
Afterwards, I think it’d be best. Thank you. Next, we’d like to recognize Daniel Anaya, U.S. Army. Nominated by Janet Vilas. Army, nominated by Darlene Woodbury. And here to accept his award are his daughters Alyssa and Ashley. Next, we have Donna Baker, Essential Worker in Education, nominated by the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. We have Fred Bargarama Jr., U.S. Marine Corps, nominated by Christina Bargarama. Next, we have Steven Leawatt, U.S. Navy, nominated by Donna Crocs. Mr. Leawatt will not be here tonight, but we’ll be getting his certificate to him. John Brenneman, U.S. Army, nominated and here to accept his award is his father, Tim Brenneman. Next, we have Julie, excuse me, Beth Simmons. Thank you. Next, we have Jack Clark, U.S. Yes, and we have Joel David Clark, U.S. Army, also nominated by Terry Clark. Kimberly Cloud, sorry, Kimberly Cloud, U.S. Army. Thank you.
Your ultimate selfie.
Charles L. Corral, U.S. Army, nominated by Ernie Corral Senior. Benjamin F. Corrata, U.S. Army, nominated by Adrian Andrea Diamis. Here to accept his award is his daughter, Janet Vilas. Melvin Drake, U.S. Air Force, Air National Guard, and Marine Corps Reserve, nominated by Liz Drake. Ronald J. Adar, U.S. Marine Corps, nominated by, and here to accept his award is his daughter, Sandy Adar. Rodolfo El Elias, U.S. Raiden Michael Grady, U.S. Navy, nominated by his mother, Michelle Singh. Here to accept the award is his daughter, Manuel Aquino, Air Force Veteran, and Ryan Heath, Ray Heath, Navy Veteran. We know Michelle is a perfection, so it’s okay. Thank you, guys, very much. Amy Guerra, Essential Worker in Education, nominated by the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. Thank you. Luis Guerra, Essential Worker in Education, nominated by the Santa Maria Joint Union Thank you. Luis Guerra, I’m sorry, we just said that one, didn’t we? Andy Hernandez, U.S. Navy, nominated by Rob, and has eight siblings that currently do all of his type. Thank you. Don Kutzey, U.S. Army, nominated by the Midcoast Veterans Alliance, and here to accept his award is Kel Next is Christina Trina Lourdes, Essential Worker in Education, nominated by the Santa Will that little movement happen for a second? Thanks, everybody, for helping us out and being patient. Rhonda, are we on and at the side in the hallway? So if there’s anybody in the hallway that hasn’t been recognized yet and wants to come into council chambers, this is a good time to do it. Okay, let’s move on. Our next veteran to recognize is David Eugene Lomas, U.S. Army. Christina Anne Miranda, U.S. Navy, nominated by her parents, Mike and Linda Miranda. Raymond Nieto, U.S. Thank you. Lee Olasko, Detective with the San Luis Obispo Police Department, nominated by Marlee Olasko. Next, we have Gabriel Ponse, or Ponsky, Essential Worker in Education, nominated by the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. Beatrice Rial, U.S. Army, nominated by Connie Loriba. Many years ago, AD, what for me?
I did, yes, sir.
Many years ago. Francisco Ribetta, U.S. Army, nominated by the Midcoast Veterans Alliance, here to accept his award is David Next, we have Jacob Philly Surat, the third, U.S. Army, and here to accept his award is his sister, Bethany Gay Schofield, and Patricia Michael Tolan, U.S. Navy, nominated by Danielle Tolan, here to accept his award are his grandmother Debbie Thank you. Shawn Torres, U.S. Thank you. Last, but not least, we have Shawn Trackett, Essential Worker in Education, nominated by the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. Mayor, council members, that concludes our class for the spring and summer of 2022 of our Hometown Heroes. We had an outstanding response. As Mr. Smithman mentioned earlier, we’ll be looking a little closer at numbers for next time around. But thank you very much for having this program. It means a lot to the families that are here. You can see some of the emotions from some of the families, he indeed recognized their family member, their hero. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Posada. I know that’s really, yeah, a lot to do with, I’m glad there was that many people that really wanted their loved ones recognized. Appreciate that so much. Thank you. The next item this evening is a proclamation, and I guess I’ll be making this presentation Whereas National Library Week was created in 1958 as a national observance sponsored by the American Library Association and libraries across the country to celebrate the contributions of libraries and librarians. And whereas the theme of National Library Week, Connect With Your Library, promotes the idea that libraries are places for the community to connect with others as well as resources to positively impact their lives. And whereas the Santa Maria Public Library is committed to upholding the values of National Library Week and encouraging community members to take advantage of the library’s diverse collection of materials and resources. And whereas the Santa Maria Public Library is celebrating National Library Week by hosting technology-themed programming, embracing patron curiosity through the Library of Things Collection, Makers Pays Program, and substantial resources on its website. And whereas the Santa Maria Public Library strives to meet the needs of the community through enhanced collections, thoughtful programs, and outreach services, and whereas librarians are trained professionals and help people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live and learn and work. Now therefore, I, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize April 3rd through 9th, 2022 as National Library Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents to connect with the fellow programming members of the Santa Maria Public Library as one of its branch libraries for curated programming, early literacy skills, and continuing education support services. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed this fifth day of April 2022.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I’d like to thank you for recognizing National Library Week and the positive impact that libraries hold with our community. As you mentioned, the theme of this year’s National Library Week is Connect With Your Library, which invites all community members to explore library resources and get connected in new ways. Now, connecting can mean many different things. So in the words of Molly Shannon, comedian and honorary Chair of National Library Week this year, “Libraries are places where communities connect to things like broadband, computers, programs and classes, books, movies, video games, and more. But most importantly, libraries connect us to each other.” So I’d like to share just one recent connection that has occurred at our library here in Santa Maria. A newly decarcerated individual attended one of our job resources workshops at the library where we connected participants with information on navigating various job search platforms, job coaching resources, application tips, and resume writing. The patron contacted the library afterward to thank staff and to let them know that he was able to obtain a job for the first time in 24 years, and he credited the workshop and the library staff with that change to his life. So connecting with libraries is often life-changing for individuals, and our library staff is very proud to positively impact the quality of life in our community. So thank you again for your recognition and support of our community library services both this week and all year through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. The next item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this proclamation is the Week of the Young Child. Whereas early care programs have made nimble and responsive to the needs of families during the COVID-19 pandemic, with many early care and education professionals keeping their doors open to support children and their families. And whereas children’s cognitive, physical, social, emotional language, and literacy skills are built on a foundation of children’s positive interaction with adults, peers, and their environment. And whereas participation in high-quality, early-care, school-aged care, and education makes working families more economically secure and prepares children to succeed in school and live healthier lives. And whereas the Santa Barbara County Child Care Planning Council, First Five Santa Barbara County, and many other local organizations, the 51st anniversary of the Week of the Young Child advances the recognition of the essential nature of the early childcare and educational profession. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the Week of April 9th through 15th, 2022, as Week of the Young Child in the City of Santa Maria and celebrates the complex, valuable, and essential work of early-care education and school-aged care professionals. And here to accept this proclamation is Robin Palmerston.
Madam Mayor, council members, I’d like to thank you very much for validating the importance of early care and education programs and professionals in the City of Santa Maria. My name is Robin Palmerston, and I’m honored and delighted to receive this proclamation on behalf of those professionals who continue to strive to serve young children and their families with accessible, affordable, and quality programming. So yes, Week of the Young Child is 51 years old, and the National Association for the Education of Young Children recognized that early childhood, the early childhood years from birth to age eight, really lay the foundation for children’s success in school as well as in later life. And as mentioned, the COVID-19 pandemic actually spotlighted the critical need for the early care and education sector to be regarded as essential. And recovery from the pandemic for children really hinges on a well-trained and widely-supported workforce, and recovery for families will include the availability of high-quality care and education programs. And so... And since quality early care and education is a critical concern for across the City of Santa Maria, we look forward to seeing how that language and those needs are included in the development of the new general plan that you're working on right now. So, thank you again very much for taking time to celebrate and focus on the complex, valuable, essential, and demanding work of early childhood and school-aged care professionals in the City of Santa Maria with this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is for the Community Development Week. Whereas the Week of April 11th through 15th, 2022, has been designated as National Community Development Week to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership or HOME Program. And whereas since 1974, the CDVG program has provided annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide affordable housing and suitable living environment and basic human services. And whereas since 1990, the HOME Program has created and preserved affordable housing for low-income families. And whereas the CDVG attracts investment in underserved communities. Every $1 of CDVG funding leveraged another $4.09. And whereas HOME attracts investment in underserved communities, every dollar of HOME funding leveraged another $4.52. And whereas over the past five years, the City of Santa Maria has invested nearly $7.8 million in CDVG funds and more than $1 million in HOME funds into the communities. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby designate the Week of April 11th through 15th, 2022, as National Community Development Week in the City of Santa Maria to celebrate and showcase the programs and projects which are funded by the federal grant programs like Community Development Block Grants and the HOME Investment Partnership. And here to receive this proclamation, we have the City of Santa Maria Community Programs Manager, Rossi Rock.
Thank you so much. CD Week is an opportunity to share with the public just how wonderful the CDVG and HOME programs are and what a difference they make in our community. You will hear about that tonight when we present our drafted action plan and the proposed allocations before you tonight. As you just heard, for the past 47 years, CDVG has provided local communities like the City of Santa Maria with an important source of funding to address a variety of needs, including homelessness, at-risk youth, seniors, individuals with special needs, and public facility improvements, to name a few. And for over three decades, the City of Santa Maria has participated in the HOME Consortium with the County of Santa Barbara. HOME funding helps create affordable housing in our community. In honor of CD Week, our office will be sending out a special CD Week electronic newsletter showcasing some of the projects and programs made possible through CDVG and HOME grant funds. On behalf of the Special Projects Division, thank you, City Council, for continuing to utilize this funding to help improve the lives of our residents.
Next, we have another proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for asking me to read this one. I have some history with this organization. It was the early 80s. I was a young detective, and I was asked to take a position on the board. Some 35 years went by. I had gotten off the board, and my wife took my position. And there's something you need to know more than the proclamation. In the old days, it was very difficult for law enforcement to investigate sexual assault cases, rape cases. And when the law was passed to develop something like the Rape Crisis Center, it became the only component, the Rape Crisis Center as we know it today, became the only component of the investigation that was not there to get something. It was there to just address the needs. And I'm proud to have been one of the people that got together, and we built this system, and much of it is being used today. So, with great pleasure and great respect, this proclamation for the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. And whereas the National Sexual Assault Awareness Month is an annual campaign to raise public awareness about sexual assault and educate communities and individuals on how to present sexual violence. And whereas the people of all racial, cultural, economic backgrounds fall victim to sexual violence, which is widespread and impacts every person in the community. And whereas rape and sexual violence of all kinds continues to occur at an alarming rate, more than one in three women and one in four men will experience sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from sexual violence are often permanently permanent, and therefore, working together to educate the community about sexual violence, prevention, and supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions is so important. And whereas a coalition of organizations exists that directly confronts this crisis, including the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, law enforcement agencies, churches, healthcare providers, and volunteers from the community that serve these agencies, who are helping in the effort and the sexual assault. And whereas the prevention is possible when everyone gets involved by increasing the education, awareness, and community involvement, recognizing the compassion and dedication of the individuals involved in this effort, and noting the challenges of the victims, the survivors, and the sexual assault victims and their families and friends, and they struggle to cope with the reality of sexual violence. Now therefore, Alice Patino, the Mayor for the City of Santa Barbara, hereby recognizes April 2022 as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Santa Maria, and encourages all residents and businesses to participate in the month full of recognition and activities promoted by the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center and to increase the awareness of sexual assault and to create solutions in the effort and eliminate sexual violence from this city. And witness hereof, and hereto, would set her hand, is our Mayor for the City of Santa Maria, and the seal of the great City of Santa Maria was affixed to this on the fifth day of April 2022. And here to receive this is Allison Wells.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cordero and Mayor Patino for coming this morning. I had a lovely speech, and that's just gone after what Mike, Councilwoman Cordero, just said. I've been with the center for 26 years now, and the Corderos have been with us for many of those years. And I like to say that someday I'm going to grow up and be just like him and his wife. They're amazing individuals. And there's a lot to be said about sexual assault and abuse. And the reality of it is, is we think, why is there a need for a Rape Crisis Center? Well, the need is that we respond to over 80 assaults every year for immediate response. And what Mike said is correct. When the Rape Crisis Center and advocate responds, we're responding with a team, and we are a team with law enforcement and victim witness and the sexual assault nurse. And it is true, everyone in that room and continuous interviews afterward, they want something from that survivor. They want a piece of evidence. They want a photograph. They want a statement. And the Rape Crisis Center and our advocates are there just to hold a hand and to find a way to heal. And I thank you for that support over the years. We believe deeply in our education component in the center, education and intervention. This morning, we planted many, 333 pinwheels for child abuse awareness and the one in five that CWS have investigated in Santa Maria. Education is critical for child abuse awareness, for sexual assault, for sexual harassment across the board because men and women are victims. Men and women abuse children. One last thing I want to say as far as education goes, just a little story. We've been in the schools for over 30 years with our Child Abuse, Child Safe Program. Many years ago, one of our presenters, who'd been around for 15 years now, got a little note from someone in junior high at that point in time. And she wrote, it's supposed to be a questionnaire, but it was a, she wrote, "Thank you for saving my life." And she found that girl later on, and she had heard a program in the fourth grade. And she came up and talked to one of our presenters, and we made a CWS report and got that girl out. Education and awareness are important. Sometimes it's silence within a community, but we stand for it and we believe in it, and we thank you for your support continuously. Thank you.
The next item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
And this is Kite Month, and I'm sure we've all flown a kite in our youth before. Whereas kite flying is a family-friendly, non-polluting, healthy, educational, outdoor-oriented, and fun activity. And whereas kite flying and kite flyers from Benjamin Franklin to Charlie Brown are a quintessential part of our own American culture. And whereas kites have made significant contributions to the arts, sciences, mathematics, and history. And whereas the Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum has joined with the City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department and American Kite Flyers Association to recognize April as Kite Month. And we will use this month to educate the community about the art of kite flying. And whereas the 13th Annual Free Family Kite Festival will be held at Rotary Centennial Park in Santa Maria, California on Saturday, April 16th, 2022. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize April 2020 as Kite Month in the City of Santa Maria and encourages residents to participate in the joy and excitement of kite flying and go fly a kite. Those are the best things that you can do. And here to accept, is it Rebecca? No, okay, Donna.
Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Donna Beal, and I wanted to say thank you to you for the proclamation. As mentioned, April is National Kite Month, and the City, the Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum is delighted to be partnering with the City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department to bring back the Family Kite Festival, which has actually been on hiatus for two years. So, we're unbelievably excited to be able to be working with this partner. The reality is, we couldn't bring the Kite Festival back without them. We could not also bring it back without our title sponsor, which is the Santa Maria Public Airport District, as well as many of our other sponsors, including but not limited to Community Bank of Santa Maria, KSBY, Allen Hancock College, Boys and Girls Club of the Mid-Central Coast, Night Broadcasting, the American Kite Flyers Association, Santa Maria Valley Chamber, and The Sun. And I will say that the planning committee who's been putting all that together has recruited all of those folks in three weeks. So, I'm very impressed with the planning committee and what they've been doing. The festival is a great opportunity to share the vision of the Discovery Museum with the community. That vision is that play is critical to the development of children. The Discovery Museum was founded on that vision. We are back open, having opened in January, and we are excited to be open again and welcoming everybody back and hope you will all come fly a kite with me on April 16th. Yes?
Yes. Donna, what time does it start?
It is 12 to 4.
Perfect. Thank you.
At Rotary Centennial Park.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the public comment period. Madam Kirk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. As a reminder to those in Zoom, please raise your hand to speak if you wish to speak on the public comment portion of the agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Directions to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on the matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form.
And how many do we have?
Madam Mayor, we have seven public speakers in the building at this time. And then we'll check in with our...
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Taylor, I'm going to put you for the last because we had spoken about... Mr. Taylor was supposed to be here about a month and a half ago, and he couldn't make it, so he's here tonight. Anyway, Gary Hall, followed by Peggy Belcorta, followed by Ignacio Sanchez. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mayor. It's great to be back. I wish I had something fun to talk about like kite flying, okay? Someday, I want to stand here and talk about something fun. But instead, tonight, I want you to know my name is Gary Hall. I am a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North River Road Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team. Dozens of my fellow mobile homeowners from several different Santa Maria mobile home parks have attended numerous past city council meetings. Many have poured their hearts out, pleading for your help. Those pleas have apparently fallen on deaf ears. Santa Maria citizens routinely come to me asking, "Why do you think the Santa Maria City Council is so unwilling to consider our calls for help?" Or, "Why does Santa Maria ignore its mobile home residents?" Or, "Why does Santa Maria claim to be interested in maintaining affordable housing but refuses to take action to keep mobile home living affordable?" Of course, I don't have those answers, but I assume you do. Please, find the courage to give all of us those answers. I am here again tonight, and I intend to keep coming back if necessary until we receive your responses to the following requests. Please tell us what is required to finally be given the chance to get mobile home rent stabilization on the city council meeting agenda. Two, have a fair and open debate. Three, allow us the chance to dispel park owners' rumors of potentially negative outcomes. Four, argue the property rights of mobile homeowners are just as important as the property rights of the park owners who don't even live in Santa Maria. That's part of my crowd. Number five, fix and renegotiate the failed model lease and enforcement agreement. And/or, six, consider our proposed mobile home rent stabilization ordinance. The mobile home residents of Santa Maria need and deserve your help. You have a real chance to provide that help and to protect mobile home space affordability. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Belcorta, followed by Ignacio Sanchez. Ignacio Sanchez?
Hello, good evening. I don't know if any of you remember me. I spoke about three years ago, probably four, about homelessness. I want to thank United Way. I, I want to thank United Way, they helped me a lot, through my homelessness. They were able to get me into new apartments at Deeper Street, a job at the food bank Inc. that I now work full-time. I, I do gotta say, the journey, yeah, I have a son and a wife now. He's gonna be three right now, but the journey to me not being homeless anymore was long, but definitely worth it. It's, there is no quick fix, none at all. I, I am thankful for United Way. If I, if I had to put my, like I, my message out there, I am giving back to the community, looking at the food bank, which I enjoy very much. I, I do talk with some of the people still out there, saying that there is better. And I also promised them, I would ask for restrooms for them, like porta potties is not being homeless anymore, like I have a restroom now, I'm able to shower, I'm able to use the toilet and it's a blessing. I no longer suffer from UTIs, urinary tract infections, which is very common when you're homeless and you just can't control all your boughs and that, the, how would you say? The blessing or the, it's just great to have a restroom and it's something that you don't know you miss until you don't have it. And I did promise them I would ask you guys for all porta potties all over and I'm here to keep my promise. Anyways, I hope to see you all soon. Oh, I still have a minute? Okay. Well, it is good to see you guys again and I am glad that my life has come around.
So proud of you, Ignacio.
Thank you very much. And your son is always welcome. Thank you. Eileen Armijo, followed by Dorothy Mogavero.
Okay, I'm back again. My name's, hello, councilmembers and Madam Mayor. And did I come prepared? No. So I'm just speaking what I feel. I'd love to see on your agenda either talking about a rent stabilization ordinance or fixing the model lease. And you wonder why I go there because I live in a park that has ignored the model lease. And somewhere around 2013, the park was purchased by an LLC out of LA. They're a group of doctors and they've let the park grow, they've raised the rent horribly and it's at their discretion. They have this vacancy control and it goes up 10% every time somebody moves. This is a senior park and people die. You know, somebody else goes in and it's a small park that does not have a garage or does, they don't lease a large piece of land. Some of these people have a single wide, they have a small corner lot and they pay over $1,000 a month. And I get passionate about it because my husband and I, he's a retired teacher, activist, definitely. And we're comfortable enough. And I look at some of these people, they're retired, they live on social security and one lady's afraid if her husband dies, she can't stay there. She'll have to move out of the park. And there should be some equality between the owners of the park and the people who lease the land from them. They own the mobile homes and as the rent goes so high, the mobile homes lose value. So these people can't even sell them because our park is older and our rent is higher than some of the new parks and our rent is higher than people who own modulars in a park or that has a park that has a golf course or has, has a large pool and a nice clubhouse. We have little of that and yet the owners are allowed to do this. I mean, the rent goes up, the rent goes up every year by the CPI out of LA and it's not at the same time, it's all different times of the year. So we're just asking you to give us a forum to discuss the issues that need to be discussed and make it a fair equal. They deserve their, their, whatever their revenue they get, they purchase the land, understand, but they deserve to treat their tenants well too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, but I think you called Peggy Brierton?
Yes.
It was Peggy something else, I didn't, didn't hear Brierton.
Belcorta?
Oh, I said Belcorta. Yes, was that you, Brierton?
I'm Brierton.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I couldn't read it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I can't read my writing sometimes after I've written things, so I'm sorry. Go ahead, Peggy.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Peggy Brierton, I'm a resident of Casa Del Rio. And policies that the council write are important. You write them for a reason and sometimes policies don't go as planned. The model lease is one of them. When we moved into our home in August of 2020, we were given the owner's lease to sign, which we did. It had a 10% vacancy clause in it and we thought, well, that's just what it is. And we came to find out later on that there was actually another option, the model lease option, which we were not shown. I guess it turns out that you only have to see, we only could see the model lease if we disagreed or refused to sign the other lease. But we were buying our home, so why would we refuse to sign the lease that we were given, saying that we needed to sign it? So, I mean, this is a policy problem. You know, this, this, the model lease needs some adjustments. It's just basically bad policy to say, oh, you can only see the model lease after you disagree with the lease that you first look at. Now, that's a problem. Now, there's other problems with the model lease that need to be looked at. Pass-throughs are very concerning. I don't know if you're aware, but Casa Del Rio is up for sale. What is that going to look like when we have some of those pass-throughs that is very mumbljumbled, I couldn't figure out for the life of me how or what that will look like. But I guarantee you, his taxes are going up and we get to, we get to help him with that. So, the new owners. So please, put this on the agenda, let's discuss, fix the problem that model lease needs to be fixed or a rent stabilization ordinance, whatever you want to call it, you know, but it needs to be fixed. This policy is flawed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Patino. I'm Dorothy Mogavero and last year I retired from my career and I was at the United Way, Northern Santa Barbara County office here in our community. Recently, I've been hearing comments, could turn into rumors, but even questions about the fact of whether or not United Way is actively taking care and addressing homelessness as part of one of their programs. And I just want to be here to support the United Way and also to create community awareness that yes, in fact, the United Way is actively out there taking care of many of the issues that we all have as a community in connection with our homeless families and individuals. And not only are they have AmeriCorps, which we've had for several years now here in our community, that their whole focus and emphasis is homelessness and veterans and the disabled and our youth and on and on. Not only do they go out there on a daily basis to go ahead and meet with them in their own areas, in their own little communities and places, but they also have strategic sites where they know that they can come and someone's going to be there to listen to them and to address their needs. We are also a partner and since I stopped working, I've become extremely involved even more so in my church and we're a partner with United Way. Not only does the United Way provide us with ways in which to reach our homeless families and individuals, but we in return also do fundraising and participate with them. So it's housing, it's jobs, it's clothing, it's just bringing them into a family unit in which to share what they're going through and what they're feeling. So I just want to put that information out there that the AmeriCorps part of and is a program of United Way is actively working hard throughout our entire Santa Barbara County to make a difference with all the other wonderful agencies and the city and the county and on and on, to make a difference and to help people come out of their situations and have honor and pride and a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Taylor, I have two slips for you here and looks like different handwriting, so are there too Eddie Taylors in the house or?
There's only one of me.
Okay.
Thank God.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. It's counsel.
So about a month and a half ago, Mr. Taylor was supposed to be here talking about the United Way and was not able to make it, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
It was, I was made aware about a month ago of comments made to the council regarding the United Way's Home for Good initiative and I thought it'd be a good idea to address the misinformation. Some in the community are under the impression that the United Way is no longer involved in addressing homelessness through the Home for Good initiative and that's not true. When we started Home for Good, we meant what it says in the title of the program, "Home for Good, not home for a while and then back in the streets." Our AmeriCorps program, which started six years ago, has grown to 30 full-time equivalent workers distributed throughout the county, working with county departments and nonprofit organizations. These AmeriCorps members are dedicated to assisting veterans and people experiencing homelessness. In fact, last year, during the pandemic, AmeriCorps workers throughout our partnership were responsible for housing 535 individuals. They also assisted 75 veterans, housing 30 of those veterans. Truly remarkable work done by a small team of dedicated individuals. However, in the past two years, we've started to focus our AmeriCorps workers' efforts more on housing retention, again, home for good, to provide opportunities to become stable and self-sufficient. Nacho, thank you for speaking. That's the kind of story we tell. What's also true is that in 2018, the United Way accepted the responsibility as the lead agency to work with the county to develop the coordinated entry system. The outcomes of those efforts were extraordinary. The homeless management information system was populated with usable data for the county to decide how to best approach and assist the unsheltered homeless. We also organized more than 20 partners in that coordinated entry system. Our responsibilities under that contract ended in August of 2021. We then transferred the responsibility to the county Housing and Community Development Department. We honored our commitments and we maintain six AmeriCorps members on staff today, working here in Santa Maria through the United Way to continue to do the work of housing retention. We have, we have applied for a third, a three-year contract for the AmeriCorps program and expect its approval next month. We cannot continue to have the same results without our partnerships with nonprofits, the county departments and the cities that help us do our work. The financial support from Santa Maria helps us maintain our AmeriCorps workforce and provides the only mobile shower unit operating in North County. The shower unit serves as a coordinated entry site, providing health and hygiene and food and clothing through partnerships with local churches and the Salvation Army. Your continued financial support is imperative and we look forward to that continued partnership. If I may take another minute, I want to share with you what our plans are going forward in 2022. We looked at our next area of impact with the end of our enormous responsibilities and substantial investment of resources to create the coordinated entry system for the county. As a four-impact organization, the United Way had a tremendous impact on raising awareness of low basic literacy skills in our students and workforce. Our literacy program continues funding the Imagination Library and assisting with reading intervention programs in local schools. However, we recognize that it's necessary to launch Literacy 2.0. In 2022, we're planning and preparing to introduce a financial literacy program for school-aged youth. This program will introduce curriculum to third and fourth graders, helping them develop goals and savings habits. In addition, we will work with our partners to open savings accounts, to reinforce the habits that are learned through the curriculum. And finally, we will engage with families to continue that process as their children grow. To do that, we're implementing a program we call Ready for K and Beyond. I hope you all want to learn more about that program and y'all know where to find me because I'm not going anywhere. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And sort of piggybacking on that, I know, you know, the city went out with, with the help also of San Luis, San Luis Obispo County Sheriff to clean up the riverbed. It was what, 42,000? I, I think I told someone 42,000 tons, but it was only 42,000 pounds and that's a big difference. But, and of trash and that doesn't count for any of the metal or recycling, that was just trash. And then also we had to get permission from private owners of the land along there because it doesn't, everyone thinks that the city, the river is part of the city and it is not. So I know this last week, code compliance, along with law enforcement, also went out to clean up along from the potato sheds on back on the railroad tracks and they got 62,000 pounds, not tons, pounds of trash. And again, there were engines, there were pieces of bicycle parts, all kinds of things that, and some recycle, I'm sure, in there that was cleaned up. So we offered, we offer help to people who want to be housed or if they need services to, were able to reunite and with their families. One person said that he would take, I guess went to Good Samaritan and wanted, and then then guess decided he wanted to be reunited with his family up in San Jose. So we can't force them into housing, but we can certainly make that available to them. And I, I think it's very important to do. So anyway, this is basically what Santa Maria is doing. Mr. Stillwood, do you have any other comments on that? And I know the Salvation Army is helping on that and there's another nonprofit, Good Sam is a big help, but the other nonprofit that helped with the clean up the riverbed was Blue, Blue Something. What?
United by Blue.
United by Blue. Okay, I knew it was Blue Something. And so, anyway, I, I think that it's, it's important for the city to know that we are doing that. And no speakers on Zoom, so thank you very much. Any other comments? Mr. Stillwood? Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
I just want to thank Eddie and Dorothy, Carmen, all of you that worked for United
So it really takes everyone, an entire community. We have a lot of great nonprofits in our community that really have stepped up to help us with the homeless problem. It's not just, it's not just us and law enforcement certainly can't do it and we have code compliance out there that's doing so much work and, and then there's, and then there's Caltrans. Okay, so then we've got the people that have moved under the bridge, that's Caltrans jurisdiction. We are working with them, I guess, sort of have meetings with them and we talk about it and they're going to come in and, and they're going to clean up there, the same is on Jones Street and that's their jurisdiction, we're not allowed there, that is their jurisdiction and they will be cleaning it up. And I was told in a couple of weeks, and I think that was four weeks ago. So we will keep, we'll keep at them and hopefully they'll, they'll get the message. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, before we commence with the adoption of the consent calendar, staff would like to pull item number 3E regarding the council districts map and City Attorney Watson would like to make a comment.
Mr. Watson?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you would pull item 3E for a correction, I would appreciate it.
Pull 3E, okay. Got it. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I was going to mention that item as well. I don't plan on voting against it, but I do need to explain some, something on the, on the mapping that we did.
Okay, so let's.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I would like to request just clarification on one of the items as well, a different item.
Oh, which item?
The 3I.
3I?
And regards the water purchase.
Okay. Let's take 3I first. Go ahead.
I'll read the title for that one.
Yes, please read the title.
Item 3I is adopt a resolution approving a water purchase agreement with Central Coast Water Authority.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Shad, just, I wanted to, you know, for everybody who's watching us, to explain a little bit about what's, what's the reason we, we're, we're trying to do this, going through this purchase program, and any recommendations in regards, like what's, what's going on?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Escobedo, I appreciate the opportunity. Some of you may be aware that the Governor of California issued an executive order last week regarding the drought, and it is on the news every day talking about the lack of rainfall and snowpack that the state of California has had since the, the beginning of the year. While the year started out gangbusters in November, December, essentially the spigot turned off starting in January. So we are still in the throes of the drought, and importantly, as that executive order works its way through the State Water Resources Control Board, there will be new rules promulgated that the City of Santa Maria will require, be required to enforce and adopt. So we will be coming back to the city council as those work their way through the regulatory agencies. But just as importantly is that in the drought, water supply is critical. It's important in the valley for agriculture. It's important for all the residents and businesses in Santa Maria. So what we are looking at here is that the groundwater basin in Santa Maria is plentiful, but we also augment that with state water supplies. We do that for quality reasons. Usually, the water that we import from the state has less hardness in it so that we provide a better quality product to our customers, if you will. But importantly, also during the hot summer months, we utilize that state water, if you will, to augment our groundwater wells. So when it's very hot, very dry, and people are watering their lawns, and there's a lot of water use in the long days of summer, the state water provides an important role in, in evening out what we can provide with our local groundwater wells. In light of that, the City of Santa Maria has put together a supplemental water purchase program with the Central Coast Water Authority to try to procure some additional state water resources throughout this year. The state water allocation is currently sitting at 5%. So of the roughly 17,000 acre feet that the city holds title to, the Department of Water Resources indicated that they will deliver approximately 5% of that. So it's a much smaller number. It's under 1,000 acre feet. Throughout the course of the year, the city provides approximately 13,000 acre feet overall, so it is a very small portion. The remainder of that will be made up with local groundwater wells. But importantly, during those peak summer months, we want to go out on the market, get some additional supplies for this year so that we can ensure to meet the needs of the resident businesses in the community.
And would that entail any increase in water prices?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Escobedo, at this time, the City of Santa Maria does budget what we call Dry Year Water Purchases each year in case of such an emergency, and that is part of our anticipated cost and included in our current rates. So no, there is no anticipated increase in rates. However, we are starting to, not starting, we are continuing and enhancing our drought messaging, and we really want to encourage the people in Santa Maria to conserve water. It is a very important resource in the valley, and if each of us does a little, we can save a lot.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's something I would like everybody who's watching us and everybody who's here, send a message that, you know, we gotta take care of water because, I mean, it's, water is life on the day. So thank you, Shad. That's it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
On, on that subject, Shad, maybe you can help me here. If I'm wrong, correct me because I'm going to say something here. We've been doing this water purchase for years. We've done this many times in the past, right?
Yes, we have participated in this in the past.
Okay. And there has even been times when we've purchased water and decided, well, maybe we don't need this water, and we've sold it and actually made a profit on it. Is that right?
I don't think so.
There have been opportunities that the city has entered the Dry Year Water Purchase Program in the past. Generally, when there is, when it's not a drought and there is significant water available throughout the state, the water is available at a decreased cost. There have been situations in the past where the city, through its forward thinking, acquired some of that water, and it was essentially sitting in San Luis Reservoir. It was not the intent to hold that water indefinitely or to sell it, as you indicate, as a profit. However, through good planning by the city and through happenstance, the next year was a very low allocation year where there was very high demand on the system, and the city was in the very unique position of having excess water available, and we were able to help other agencies meet their water needs. It's very important to recognize that a lot of agencies, even in Santa Barbara County, are very reliant on small groundwater basins, and the importation of state water or other water is critical to meeting their day-in-and-day-out needs, and we had the opportunity in those years to help our fellow water purveyors in this region meet their needs.
Thank you, sir.
Were you, were you talking about the water we sell to Nopomo?
No, not the water we sell to Nopomo. I was talking about the water that sometimes we purchased. We've had it on hand and then ended up selling it to someone else.
And just for clarification, you might want to let them know where the San Luis Reservoir is. It's not right next to.
Yeah, San Luis Reservoir is not San Luis Obispo County. Yeah, it's between Hollister and Gustine, Santa Nella. So as you go over the, the highway there.
Yeah, before you hit I-5.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion on the consent calendar with the exception of item 3E?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3E. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Okay, 3E?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Watson?
In the review of the ordinance, it was made, made clear that we needed to clarify section seven because election ordinances are effective immediately, and our standard language had it effective 30 days from now. I wanted to make sure that was clear for the record since it is an election-based ordinance. So I would propose that the, the section seven be amended as follows, that the ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to Government Code Section 36937, period, eliminate the words and affect, and affect 30 days after its passage, and then change within 15 days of passage to the city clerk shall.
Okay.
Those notations will be corrected both in the record and in the ordinance that's published.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So I make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second, okay. And then, Mr. Cordero, you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, Mayor, the last meeting we had, we, we voted on maps. And as you recall, I, I voted against the map that we ended up adopting, and there was some confusion with some people that were, that ended up watching that, and they said, well, why did you vote against it and then vote for it? But they didn't realize that we voted on two different things. I voted against the map that we ended up adopting, and I voted for the, the ordinance that we ended up. The council had ruled, and I wanted to follow the will of the council. I, I saw no point in not supporting the council. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that, that we were, when we did that, it was two different incidents or two different matters that were dealing with the same subject matter, and it was just needed some clarification, and if there's only one person that listens to this, then that'll be fine with me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Any other further discussion?
I was recording on YouTube.
Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Thank you. The next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider the Block Grants Advisory Committee's recommendations for the allocation of fiscal year 2022-23 community development block grant program funds, consider allocating $37,500 to public service programs, and consider staff's recommendation for capital funds.
The staff report will be made by community programs manager, Ms. Rojo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we will conduct a public hearing to receive comments from the public as part of the drafted fiscal year 2022-23 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, action plan, and consider the Block Grants Advisory Committee's recommendations for the allocation of both CDBG capital and CDBG public services, and have council members allocate their $37,500 to public services programs, and review the approved, and review and approve the overall allocations and contingencies which make up the drafted fiscal year 2223 CDBG drafted action plan. As you heard earlier during our CD Week proclamation, CDBG is a program administered by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. CDBG's main requirement is that the city's activities and projects meet one of the three national objectives, in particular, primary benefit to low and moderate income persons. Nearly two-thirds of the city of Santa Maria's population is considered low to moderate income. This means that the majority of the city's residents benefit from these CDBG dollars. The proposed CDBG recommendations before you tonight are ones that our Block Grants Advisory Committee voted on following application reviews and site visits. And before I proceed, I would like to thank our committee members for their time and hard work. We do have a few committee members here tonight representing our Block Grants Advisory Committee members. You see Bob Doyle, Chairperson Ryan Fisher, and Isaac Baduman. Thank you so much. Oh, and Jennifer Camacho.
You must have worn them all out. They didn't come, show up tonight.
I know. Well, they've worked really, really hard, so they deserve a night off. The committee is currently made up of 14 volunteers who spent countless hours reading over applications, attending site visits, writing reports, and deliberating on these It is anticipated that the city will receive about the same amount of CDBG funding as last year. This means that for fiscal year 2223, the city of Santa Maria anticipates receiving about $1.6 million. Of this amount, 20% or about $326,000 will be available for general administration, 15% or about $244,000 will be available for public services, and the remaining 65% or a little under $1.1 million will be available for capital projects. Now, this capital project amount includes reprogrammed funding from previous closed-out projects, and a recap of estimated available funding is included in Attachment A of your council packet. As part of our funding process, the Block Grants Advisory Committee conducted a virtual community needs meeting last year on Monday, July 26, to kick off the funding cycle and receive comments from the public and discuss the needs and priorities in the community. The needs expressed were reflected in the existing CDBG funding priorities. Therefore, the Block Grants Advisory Committee did not recommend that changes be made to the priorities, and these recommendations were approved by the city council on August 17, and that is Attachment B in your packet. A notice of funding availability and request for applications was issued on Monday, August 23 of 2021, and a mandatory pre-application workshop was conducted on Thursday, October 14, 2021. Applications were due on Wednesday, December 8 for both public services and capital. Staff received 21 applications for public services and five applications for capital funding. There is also a request for minimal capital funding to cover staff's administrative costs associated with its tenant-based rental assistance program. In January of this year, the Block Grants Advisory Committee divided into five teams and conducted virtual site visits and in-depth reviews of each application. This includes a written report by each team that was shared with the rest of the committee. After that, there was, by, there was a deliberations process which was divided into two virtual public meetings. The first meeting took place on Tuesday, February 15, and it allowed applicants to go before the committee to answer additional questions related to their applications. The second part of the deliberations process took place two days later on Thursday, February 17. During this session, the public was allowed to observe but not participate. Committee members discussed the applicants, utilized the information gathered and provided by, provided by staff, and voted on the recommendations that are being presented to you tonight, and those are Attachments F and G, which include the public services allocation recommendations and the capital project recommendations. So let's get into the recommendations. Under capital funding, the Block Grants Advisory Committee is proposing that projects be funded per the city council's recommendations from the Tuesday, October 5, 2021 city council meeting. At that meeting, the city council expressed interest in making the city of Santa Maria's Public Works Department ADA Pedestrian Safety Project a top priority, with the other projects prioritized as shown in this slide and also shown in Attachment G of your packet. A quick allocation overview shows that the majority of the funding will be used for public improvements and revitalization of neighborhoods, followed by a project, by a project assisting those experiencing homelessness and housing-related needs. Since the city does not know exactly how much CDBG funding it will receive this year, the Block Grants Advisory Committee adopted contingencies to assist in the allocation process and avoid delaying the city's ability to submit an approved action plan to HUD. So should the city receive more CDBG funding than expected, funding will be added to Communify until the agency is allocated $100,000 max or until funding is exhausted. If there is additional funding left after allocating it to Communify, the ADA Improvement Project will get the rest of the funding. Now, should the city receive less CDBG funding than expected, funding will be reduced from Good Samaritan Shelter, followed by Communify in that order until the team recommendation is met. So moving on to the CDBG public services breakdown, and that is Attachment F in your packet, regarding public services, the Block Grants Advisory Committee focused on those programs and projects that prevent homelessness, meet critical emergency need, assist the elderly, and expand services for at-risk youth. Of those applications, 11 of the 21 public services applicants are recommended for funding. Here you can see an overview of how that allocation is spread out. 45% would go to critical need, followed by at-risk youth, then homelessness, and then And contingencies were also adopted for public services. Now, this, this one's a little tricky, but I, I will do my best to explain. So should the city receive more CDBG dollars than expected, funding will be distributed in order to the agencies who were allocated the site visit team recommendation but requested a higher amount. So you will see in one of the columns in Attachment F of your packet, there's a team recommendation, and there are a, so if, if, if there's a higher team recommendation, then they will get more if there's additional funding. The amount will be distributed until those agencies reach the requested amount or closest to, depending on the amount of additional funding received. If additional funding still remains after doing that, the amounts will be evenly distributed to the rest of the recommended subrecipients. If the estimated amount is increased by a substantial amount, so let's say HUD just is very generous and gives us a ton of money, then funding will be allocated as mentioned above, and if there is enough funding remaining to meet the minimum of the $15,000 threshold, then funds will be distributed to agencies not recommended for funding based on the survey ranking and given the team recommended amount until funds are exhausted. So for example, the next one on the list who has not received funding would then get funded at a minimum of $15,000, and that is if we receive more funds than expected. Now, if we receive less funding than expected, funding will be cut from those allocated more than the team recommendation until funds are exhausted. So due to the limited amount of funding available under public services, since we do have a 15% cap and we cannot provide more than 15% of our overall allocation to the public services section, 10 applicants were not recommended for funding. You can see those on your screen. Staff and the Block Grants Advisory Committee recognize that all of these agencies provide excellent and needed services throughout the community. However, there is just limited funding to go, to, to go around. However, there is just limited funding to go around. So when it comes to public services, each council member usually gets $7,500, but because we only have four council members, it's your lucky day, and you get $9,375. So we're dividing up the $37,500 into four parts so that each council member who is present is able to allocate that funding. So each council member can either can split its $9,375 and provide it to existing agencies that are already getting funded, or you can combine your allocation with another council member so you can fund a project that has not been funded. Keep in mind that there's a $15,000 minimum to fund an agency, and there is currently approximately a $24,000 maximum because we are not going over 10% of the overall public services allocation. So currently, it's about $24,000. So at this time, we will open the discussion on the recommendations before you tonight for capital and public services funding. Once the discussion is complete and public comment is heard, we will first discuss and approve the capital project allocation recommendations and contingencies. That will be followed by council members making their $9,375 specific allocations to the public services category, followed by the overall approval of the public services allocations and contingencies. Tonight's council recommendations for capital and public services should be back for final approval on June 7. It should be noted that originally, we were scheduled to come back on May 3 for the final approval. However, last Friday, HUD informed us that the final allocation numbers will not be ready before then, and for that reason, we should delay the approval of the final action plan. The 30-day public review period will continue as planned through May 2. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions from the council? I just, you know, it just amazes me. I look through this list of that the committee put together to allocate the money, and then I go down the rest of it, and there's no fluff here. You know, it's just, we just don't have enough resources to meet the needs in the community. And they are, they're really real. To me, there's no question that they are real, and it's unfortunate. I'm sure a lot of people don't remember when the CDBG first started, and I would try to encourage people to put in applications. We didn't have that many applications, and I thought, I wonder why people aren't signing up for this. This sounds like a great... You know, sometimes things too good to be true aren't, you know? But in this case, it was. And then finally, I think it probably took maybe a couple of years, maybe three years for people to catch on, and then we started seeing it. And here we have, like you say, more applications than we have resources. So I'll open up a public hearing for both the capital and public services allocations. Do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, staff received written comments from a number of people. I'll list them shortly. Actually, I'll list them now. From Barry Stotts, Erica Dixon, Paige Mason, Catherine Boyce, Sarah McDonald, Karen Rice, Cliff Solomon, Sarah Lillard, Reverend Tim Burdenett, and the Wanda Lyons Pruitt, asking for consideration of funding for the Independent Living Resource Center. They provide much-needed services in the area, not limited to housing, personal assistance, interpreting, peer support, youth transition, assisted technology for those with disabilities. Karen Flickinger wrote, requesting consideration for Independent Living Resource Center and Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. We have two requests to speak in person, and I am showing several hands coming up in Zoom, so we can address those after the ones in our chambers.
Okay.
Three minutes?
Yes. Edwin Weaver, followed by Steve Delara. Good evening, Mr. Weaver.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So glad to see you, and I don't envy you one bit. You're right, every agency on that list is worthy of funding, and so thank you for wrestling with it and making the best decision for our city. I also want to thank our CDBG council. It is a thankless job in so many ways, Ryan, leading them, and Rosie, advising them. You know, here's my pitch, right? Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley is an organization that was started here in Santa Maria by the people of Santa Maria. We love this city. When I took over in 2014, it was clear that the focus is the valley. We live here. I live four blocks from here, raised my kids here, and so do our staff. It's an important part, a vital part of our community. The other thing is, you know, we are tasked with the honor of reaching out to that younger set of homelessness, you know? The state decided that it's very important, and I would agree, that this 18- to 24-year-old homeless person is a very important window and opportunity. You know, none of us like to wake up and look out and see encampments in the riverbed or along the freeway or under the freeway. Our hearts are going out to them. We love the partnerships with Good Samaritan and CityNet and the other providers who are reaching out to them. But I say we need to have a longer vision as well. How do we prevent them from ever getting there in the first place? How do we prevent the person... You know, if we could go back and talk to the person who's 40 and 50 years old living in the riverbed, wouldn't it be great to talk to them when they were 18 and say, hey, we have an opportunity here for you. Here's a place to get housed. Over the last couple of years, we've had the opportunity to do that. We successfully housed over 75 young people in that age group. We bought a house with state funds, and now we have beds for four people there that we do permanent supportive housing for. And we're very proud of those people that we've housed. Not only are they housed, you know, before they can get housing, they have to show proof of income, which means we have to help them get a job. We have to get them job-ready, and we partner with our good friends over at Goodwill and other job agencies. And we're very proud of the work that we do. We do need your support today. I know it's hard to do the math, but we need two of you to get us to the... Or three of you or four of you to get us to the level of 15 grand. It isn't the program, that $15,000, but it does put the pieces of the puzzle, because we're putting all these pieces. We've got a little bit of HAP money, a little bit of state money, a little bit of federal money, and we have this empty spot where that 15 grand needs to go, and we needed to come from CDBG. So thank you for your time. Appreciate all of you, and again, good luck trying to figure this one out.
And Mr. Delara, how are you this evening?
Well, it's good to be in person, actually, and see all y'all again. It's been over two years since we've seen each other. So I am Steve Delara from Family Service Agency of Santa Barbara County, also Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center. We have two locations here in Santa Maria, one at 105 and North Lincoln, and one on Ino Street, which is our Family Resource Center. Do you know that Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center was established in 1973, and next year will be our 50-year anniversary. It'd be good to go back, Edwin, to talk to those young people and say, 50 years ago, how did the services help you, and what have you done differently? The COVID impact was just devastating to our community, and unfortunately, we saw some really sad cases, some very needy people that were in need of services. And collectively, we all came together, public sector, private sector, philanthropic, and nonprofits, all coming together to make a collective impact on our communities. No one agency could have serviced our city the way we all did together. And some of you, like Mr. Cordero, had called my office, and we were talking about the homelessness across the street. I invited Carlos to come over, Councilmember Carlos, to come over after we had two homicides across from Communify and from the Lincoln Street address. We've contacted the mayor to ask for letters of support, and every time people reached out and reached out, the help was there. And so today, what we're saying and what we're asking is to support the recommendation of the committees to allocate $15,000 to Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center for our Family Resource Center, which provides much-needed assistance to families that are coming, whether it be homelessness, whether they need help with their applications for unemployment, social security, any type of services that they need to come in. And we actually have intensive in-home services for them as well, and we do parent educations. We do couples relationship, and we work with Santa Barbara County Probation, Department of Social Services, Department of Behavior Wellness. Collectively, we are making an impact, and we are making a difference. Somebody had said before I got to this, meaning the struggle is real, and it really is, and it really is. And I thank all of you for all that you've done. And Rosie knows this, and I'm going to share this brief story with you to show you the impact. Rosie one day sent an email, and she said, do you know anybody that can help? We had a fire with about 14, 17 units, and the families are in need of assistance. We sent our family outreach advocacy kits out to the residents to go meet with them, to go get those kids back in school, to get them services, to partner with multiple other agencies to get them bedding, clothing, food, and other supplies that they needed to reestablish their life. One call from Rosie did all of that in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delara. Madam Clerk, we have requests to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have five individuals with their hands raised on Zoom. And if you don't mind, I'll start with Alexa Martin. Ms. Martin? Not quite.
Technology.
Now, we're on the right speakers. Is it possible you could speak closer to your microphone?
I can be at this point. Are you able to hear me okay now?
I've got you as loud as I could get you.
All right. Well, I'll try to speak loud as well.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to make a comment tonight. My name's Alexa Martin, and I'm the Program Director with Independent Living Resource Center. For those of you who are not familiar with us, ILRC is the only cross-disability, peer-run organization in Santa Barbara County. We have been providing services to any person with any disability of all ages for more than 46 years. ILRC's mission is to promote independent living and full access for people with disabilities through advocacy, education, and action in our communities. Benefits assistance, information and referral, advocacy, personal assistance, assisted technology, emergency preparedness, and housing are just a few of the many services we provide that enable our consumers to live more independent lives and continue as or become active members within their communities. Additionally, we have worked hard to ensure our consumers' needs were met as a result of the pandemic, including access to food, addressing the digital divide, and ensuring our consumers continue to have access to the services and supports that they rely on. I want to thank you for your many years of support for ILRC. We understand that the grant committee has an incredibly challenging job with many worthy applicants, and these decisions are not made lightly. While we did not make the cut for recommendations this year, we know this was not due to a lack of wanting to support our agency, but because there's truly not enough funding to go around. Local support is critical to ILRC's success and ability to continue providing services each year. It allows us to leverage funds for our state and federal grant matching support requirements, and it shows that the city of Santa Maria supports their residents with disabilities. Without funding, we may have to reduce staff hours, which would result in lengthy wait lists for consumers to receive services, and therefore, less capacity to provide these important services to the disability community in Santa Maria. I want to mention that we are careful, diligent stewards of these funds and ensure that all reporting and grant requirements are always met. I am here tonight to encourage the City Council members to use your discretionary funds to support ILRC so we continue the great work we do in the Santa Maria community. Thank you again to the City Council members and the grant committee for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martin. The next speaker we have is Jacob Lesner-Buxton. Mr. Buxton? Yes, we can. Thank you, Mr. Buxton. Next, we have Nicole Janikowski.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Nicole Janikowski. I'm the Independent Living Advocate with the Independent Living Resource Center. I greatly appreciate the council for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. ILRC prides itself on being a peer-driven service provider. Many ILRC employees have disabilities of our own, and this allows a personal understanding of the many barriers individuals with disabilities face in our community. ILRC is devoted to advocacy and promoting independence. We provide a wide array of services to our community members who have any disability of any age. A few of the core services we provide are independent living skills, information and referral, housing assistance, peer support, disaster preparedness, assisted technology, benefits, and interpreting services for our deaf community, and that's just to name a few. I'd like to share with you a comment from one of my consumers. My consumer is a young mother with three children. She has a diagnosis of... She has a diagnosis of PTSD and bipolar. She was homeless, living in her car when she came to IRLC. She wrote, "I am so grateful for IRLC. I had not, I had a stable, have not had a stable living since 2013. I was homeless, living anywhere I could. After I had my daughter in 2019, my children and I were displaced and shared a room. I was not able to see any light at the end of the tunnel until I was referred to IRLC. I'm not exactly sure of the time, but it seemed that from anywhere from six months to less than a year, I found housing for me and my three children. Nicole from IRLC helped me tremendously. She always kept me up to date on waitlists that were going to be opening up in my area." Shortly after we signed up for a few low-income housing waitlists, I received an email to come in for an interview. "I now have a three-bedroom apartment for my three children and myself. I owe it all to Nicole, IRLC, and DOR for referring me to them." This is just one success story of many. However, it shows how critical IRLRC services are and how much of an impact IRLC is to our community. I would like to encourage the council to use any available funds to support IRLC so we are able to continue the great work we do in Santa Maria community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Janikowski. Next, we have Brandon Smith.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Brandon Smith, and I am the Emergency Preparedness Services Manager for the Independent Living Resource Center. I believe that we are an invaluable asset to the city of Santa Maria when it comes to the services that we provide to the disability community. In my role, I support our community members with disabilities in being prepared for when, not if, the next emergency or disaster event occurs. During the major public safety power outage event that occurred this last October, myself and another team member delivered numerous portable backup batteries to the homes of individuals who rely on medical equipment that uses power. These batteries provide a lifesaving resource for these individuals. Without the support, the consequences would be dire, and IRLC is the only disabilities program in the city of Santa Maria that provides this lifesaving service. This is just one of many critical services IRLC provides to the disability community, and I am here today to encourage you to use your discretionary funds to fund IRLC so that we can continue providing these services to our disability community here in Santa Maria. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, our final speaker this evening is Jayden Gaines.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jayden Gaines, and I am the Program Services Manager at the Independent Living Resource Center, or IRLC. IRLC is a private nonprofit providing vital services to people with disabilities for almost 50 years in Santa Barbara County. And like some of my other colleagues, I'm here to encourage you to use your discretionary funds to support IRLC so we can continue the great work we do in the, in Santa Maria community. As our program, our Program Director Alexa Martin previously stated, IRLC provides a wide variety of services, including information and referral, housing navigation services, public benefits counseling, and individual and group advocacy services. I want to share some data with you to give you some perspective on just how much IRLC benefits the disability community in Santa Maria. IRLC has provided over 1,100 services to people with disabilities in Santa Maria alone within this past year, all provided to more than 180 individual consumers. Over 50% of our goals in Santa Barbara County were created by residents of Santa Maria in need of emergency and disaster preparedness planning. In addition, our Santa Maria staff have provided over 260 information and referral services to the community. Lastly, I want to leave the council with a reminder that disability is a natural part of the human experience. The onset of disability can occur at birth, as a result of an accident, or as an effect of aging. Some disabilities are only temporary while some are lifelong. Disability either has or will affect each of our lives personally, considering that 1 in 5 or 20% of Americans live with a disability. Please join us in supporting people with disabilities in Santa Maria by funding IRLC. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Madam Mayor, it looks like we had one other person raise their hand. May I?
Absolutely.
That would be Chelsea Crabbe. Ms. Crabbe?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Now we can, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Chelsea Crabbe. I am a former intern and current consumer of the Independent Living Resource Center. In my experience, IRLC has become a place that I feel completely accepted, which in my experience being legally blind, I have not found this previously. I had such a life-changing experience while interning, including the chance to meet community members who also had disabilities, and see how the services provided allowed consumers to grow confidence in their abilities since here the disability is celebrated. I actually found the IRLC through another organization in Santa Maria. I believe that the IRLC should be known to every organization because there are thousands of people with disabilities and many not yet know of the beneficial services that the IRLC provides. The services that I primarily used were the support groups and housing assistance as well as disaster preparedness. I was able to get a backup battery for my medical equipment that if the power ever did go out, I would be able to run my medical device. I cannot say enough of how much this means to me, and I hope that tonight you will consider funding the IRLC. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes the speakers on Zoom.
Speakers, thank you. So I'd like to close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council first for consideration of the Capitol's project allocation recommendations and contingencies.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Okay, I'm looking at the summary of the Capitol's projects application, and we have the Pearlman Park there. But down at the very bottom, where you have total amount, proposed funding is 1.6 million, estimated funding 1.98, must be reduced by 550?
You're looking at attachment G?
Um, it doesn't have a letter on it.
G, yeah. Oh, yes, that is just the summary. That was what was presented to you in October.
Okay.
When the proposals were provided.
And that still stands? Does this, does this, do these amounts still stand where you have to reduce the funding by half a million?
Yes, that's what, that's what the, that's, so the recommendations by the City Council reflects that reduction.
Okay, because I think I had mentioned Pearlman Park. We're getting ready to put a whole different unit of housings over there, and so that is now in the queue for the downtown general plan, which we're going through. I believe, Mr. Chung, we're going through the paperwork in regards to that. So I can't see giving $675,000 to something that is not going to be there very soon.
Pearlman Park is not proposed for funding.
Okay, okay.
The proposals are in attachment G.
Okay, so I was given the wrong sheet of paper.
I'm sorry about that. I believe that we provided that might have been today, just as additional feedback to that you have a description of the project.
Okay, so I'm, this is, I was going off of this, so.
So I, so that has the description of the project, whereas attachment G did not have the description of the project. So earlier, I think there was some question about what, what, what the applications were all about, so we wanted to provide that. But in attachment G, you will find, and also you can see on the slide that's up on the, on the screen, that those are the proposed recommendations that the Block Grants Advisory Committee are bringing before you.
Okay, and it is not on there.
No, and it's actually reflective of the committee, the council's, the council's recommendations back in October when you vetted the different Capitol project proposals. So it mirrors the, the council's recommendation.
Okay, that was my concern, so I'm good.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to recognize all the members of the committee. I know it's a tough, tough, tough spot, but I really appreciate your time and effort of putting this together. And question in regards, now that we have nine, it's 9,000?
No, it's just capital.
Oh, oh, just capital.
Capital, yeah, just capital.
So, yeah, that's, so then I'll wait for the, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
So question.
Oh, go ahead, Ms.
So are we approving first the capital?
The cap, we're capital projects, allocations.
Okay, yeah, just, sorry, I thought it was just general question. So I saw that for the first project, the request amount was a half a million, and committee recommends 475,000. And then on the Good Samaritan Shelter, they request 258,000, but their recommendation So it's way more than what they request. I would like to, to see if it's possible to move some money from the kitchen equipment upgrade, like the 5,000 that were now recommended, to the, to the pedestrian safety and accessibility improvement project, so they can have the 500. That would be one of the things I would like to.
Would you like to respond to that, Ms. Rojo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Escobedo, the ADA Improvement Project is actually receiving 500,000, and I apologize if it's, if the attachment G spreadsheet is, is not very clear. So we keep 5% of that as a project delivery cost to help pay for not only staff's time, but also pay for any additional costs, like environmental report costs that we might incur. And so it, taking 5% out of that 500,000 is keeping 25,000 for us. However, if that 5% is not used, which usually we never utilize all 5%, that money goes back to the project. So the money's not lost, but it is an option if you would like to add an additional 25,000 so that it would be five, it's up, it's up to the City Council how it wants to shake it out, how it wants to divvy it out. But it is technically receiving 500,000.
Okay, yeah, that was my, my concern, of, you know, kind of like, didn't, didn't make, you know, didn't, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
It's a little bit confusing now. So, thank you, thank you for explaining that to me.
Why, you're in my shoes. Any other concerns?
If no other concerns, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Capitol projects, the 2022, 23 Capitol projects, recommended allocations.
Okay, I have a, excuse me.
Contingencies? No? Did I miss that part?
And contingencies?
Do, that's if we get more money or less money, so.
It would be great if we could include the contingencies, being that we still don't know how much we're going to get. So if you are comfortable with the contingencies proposed, whether we get more or less, then we can make those adjustments without having to start the process over again.
Okay, so I'm.
Okay.
Give me a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the Capitol allocations and contingencies? If there aren't any further discussion, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterco?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Okay, here comes the good part. Just, Rosie, it was, you must have seen all of our faces light up when you said we had more money to spend.
I know.
Anyway.
But we really don't, do we?
So I am going to, I am going to support Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. I think it's really important that we help our homeless youth. And I don't know if, and you may know this, Mr. Cordero, but we have a lot of our youth that get termed out of foster care at 18, and they have no place to go. I mean, and so a lot of those people are on the streets. I know that Fighting Back rescued two of our, two youths out of the riverbed, put them in housing, and, and they get casework, they have someone taking care of them, and it's been real success stories. I mean, the governor, you should probably send this to the governor, Mr. Weaver, because you've got these young people in there, young boys, young men, and they've learned to live in a, in a home. They have to find a job, they can go to school, because it's near Hancock, so they can walk to school. But these kids have never had a job before. And when they find out they can make money, and they can be on their own, and they can get an education, they really want to get out of that house because there's rules in that house, much like there are rules in our home. And I, that's what we want. Those are success stories, and I think that's really, really important. If we don't stop them at that age from a lifestyle of being homeless and getting involved in drugs, then what we have is when they're in their 40s and 50s and 60s, Marion Hospital is having to deal with them, and, and then if they're having children, and the Good Samaritan is having to deal with them. I just think it's money well spent, it's money that we've seen that really works. It's not exactly a program. It's, it's, it's sort of detailed to every individual, and I see it as very, very important. And we know there's the mental health issues that are so prevalent in our homeless population. But before they become so entrenched in that lifestyle, I think, I think we, as a society, need to really take a hold of them. And so I, they were not given any money, so I would like, if I could have another council member.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may?
I would, I want to put my 9,000-something, yes, Mr. Cordero.
Madam Mayor, this is happening just opposite to how I had planned it to happen, and you spoke up, and usually you go last, and so you messed up my.
I'm sorry.
Procedure.
He took his thunder.
I was going to support Fighting Back, because I look at the Fighting Back, this issue as a, as an investment in our community. And I love you, Steve, but I just see that the, the grabbing these people at such a young age, I think we're, we're building a group of individuals that can help us in the future. And I was going to look at you when I made my presentation and try to beg with my eyes that you would support me, and, and, and we would be able to come up with that $15,000 for, for Fighting Back, because I really, really, truly believe that, that it doesn't make any difference to me who, who takes the homeless people and, and gives them housing. As, as you know, I'm deeply involved with United Way in getting homeless people housed there, but having the opportunity to cut down the future problems by housing them at a younger age and investing in our community and bringing them about, really, I think that's the better way to go. And so I would like to support your, your plan and, and partner with you, and, and I was just going to beg you if you could take it up to the 15,000, but I'll give you my whole 95, whatever. And we have it at, what does that add up to? I'm not.
That adds up to 18,750.
That's what I'd say, but if somebody needs a couple of thousand, I guess I could drop off. That's what I'd say, but if somebody needs a couple of thousand, I guess I could drop off.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Any other, yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Yes, uh...
Did you want to chime in on what Mr. Cordero said also?
I would like to, I have a, I was making some math in here, and after, did I have a proposal for the council? So I see that there are some organizations that are receiving more money than they request. Specifically, there are two. And if we, if we add the extra, it's fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. So it's pretty close from the minimum. If we add, what, the seven, seven thousand, five hundred dollars from Councilmember Soto. So, my, my, my proposal is to just add a little bit from another organization, so actually we can found three, instead of just two. And, and one of the organizations I would like to support, we found, it's the Independent Living Resources Center.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, are you putting your, you're not putting your full in the Independent Resource Center, you're...
Yeah, I'm willing to put the seven fifty, seven thousand, five hundred, sorry, and the allocate the rest to...
Okay, the other part, so the nine thousand?
The...
Okay, okay, I, I didn't quite understand, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So if we add, so it is nine, nine, four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars from the organization number six, plus three thousand from organization nine.
So you're wanting to reduce other, that's what I thought you were saying.
Oh, okay, you're, you're wanting to take some from this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah.
I can tell, I can tell you right now, and I've said this before, every time we get a new council member, they do this. And it's, except me, I didn't do this. And I'll tell you why. You've got fifteen people out there that have really, really worked to get this put together. They have hashed through all of this, and if I were one of those fifteen, and I saw the city council turning everything around, I'd say, you know, what, what am I worth out here? Because they do site visits, they look at the applications, they're not just looking at these numbers here. And I completely, completely support whatever our CDBG Grants Committee does, because they put a lot of work into it. When you start taking bits and pieces away, that group, that agency, isn't oftentimes able to complete what they wanted to do with that amount of money. And I think it's wrong, if you, you can, you know, you can do whatever you want, but when you start taking bits and pieces away, it, it, it affects the other agency, which affects the other agency, and it just, it just isn't a good idea. But you do what you want to do.
Yeah, no, the, I, I understand the point. My point is that, I mean, if they request an amount, specific an amount, we're actually giving more of what they request. So my idea was based on the concept of being efficient, or having a bigger, as, as a big impact as possible by also bringing another organization on board. And if, I mean, if that's not, and I have a question. So if, if I decided to put a, the seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and the rest, can I allocate it, I can allocate it to another organization, is that, is that right?
Councilmember Escobedo, yes, you are correct, you can split your set aside to different agencies, as long as the agency isn't funded under fifteen thousand, and as long as the agency isn't funded over twenty-four thousand. Also, I would like to just clarify, and again, my apologies if, if Attachment F, the, the allocation spreadsheet is not clear, but there's a column that says requested amount, and that is the amount that the agency requested. And then next to it, there is a column that says team recommendation. So I believe what you might be seeing is the team recommendation, which is actually less than what was actually requested by the agency. So there was no agency that was, that is recommended, recommended more than what it's requesting. So they, the team recommendation is the recommendation that was provided by the site visit teams, but then when the committee got together during deliberations, they all collectively decided that they were going to try and match the requested amount. So the requested amount is what the agency is asking for.
So every, every, every committee recommendation meets the exact amount of the requested amount, with the exception of the Salvation Army, is that right?
Yes, with the exception of actually the Salvation Army and Family Service Agency, those are the two. And those are actually part of the contingency, so if we are to get more money, then those two agencies would be the first ones to receive up into, up until what they asked for.
Up to the twenty thousand.
Correct, up to the requested amount.
You know, that's, yeah, that, because it, it, it didn't, I mean, it didn't make sense, uh, yeah, so now I, I understand. Thank you, thank you, Rosie.
So to clarify then, so your ninety-three, seventy-five would go to ILRC, is what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I mean, if other council member, uh, support, put a, I can, I would like to also exploit the money, if that's, so other organization can get a little bit more, but yeah.
So if that's the case, then I think, if I'm doing the math right, then if we're to, if none of the others can exceed twenty-four thousand, then Councilmember Waterfield's option would be to split, well, to either match that, because Fighting Back, you can't contribute, would take it over the...
Right.
So either match to ILRC, or you could split yours between, well, then, I was going to say, Domestic Violence Solutions and Family Services could be split, but then, then ILRC wouldn't be funded.
I would, I would say that I would be willing to add my, the extra, well, to Family Service Agency.
Man, you guys just ruined everything for me. So, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Escobedo, I just want to clarify, so your, your recommendation is seventy-five hundred to ILRC, and the rest of it to Family Service Agency. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Fighting Back cannot go over twenty-four thousand, correct? So I can take six thousand of that to meet the twenty-four, and put the rest to IRL... Yeah, okay. ILRC, it wouldn't, yeah, so that's, so I have to put it...
So you could put the balance split, you could do Domestic Violence Solutions, or more to Family Service Agency.
Were you, sorry, Jason, were you, were you trying to provide the funding to the two agencies that requested a certain amount, but did not get recommended for that funding? Oh, I see, okay.
So, what do I, we have nine, so, that could, I mean, that could go to Good Samaritan Shelter, too, right? It could go to any one of these.
Mayor, no, I don't care, we're done.
I know it. Thank you.
The Salvation Army.
You know what, I, I, I'm going to do the Salvation Army. Hot Lunch Program. Well, I'm going to do, I'm going to bring mine up to meet the twenty-four thousand for Fighting Back. And so that would be six thousand to Fighting Back, and then that balance would be to the...
Salvation Army.
Salvation Army.
Okay.
They are, um...
Okay, four thousand, one twenty-five, okay, okay.
I, I was a board member for Salvation Army, and they, they struggle quite a bit.
Okay, so...
The result of that map, however, math means that the seventy-five hundred that Mr. Escobedo previously wanted to allot to ILRC, has to be reallocated to something else.
Yeah, it has to go someplace else.
Correct, because you can't get there.
Okay, so, Mr. Escobedo, now it's your turn.
Because they have to be fifteen thousand?
Minimum fifteen thousand. So the only, the only way ILRC could potentially be funded is if Mr. Escobedo gives his ninety-three hundred allocation, you give the balance to get to fifteen, and then you divide up the balance for whatever else beyond that.
Okay.
Unless there's another, unless there's another way of going.
I'm willing to, to do that, to put my nine thousand.
Nine thousand for the, okay, and so then I would need to put, put my four thousand in? To bring it up, because they have to come up to fifteen, right? So that's still not, that still doesn't make it? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Okay. 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 To Fighting Back.
This is what happens when you're trying to do it the way the federal government puts it together for you.
Okay.
You'd have a balance of three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
How much?
Three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Good thing he's a lawyer.
Okay, you know what, let's do that then. So Carlos, we, we got where we are with the, with the IRC. And they got their fifteen. And then, yeah, the rest would go to Fighting Back.
Thank you, Councilmember Waterfield.
Absolutely, my pleasure, no, my pleasure.
I'll, I'll wait and read, I'll, I'll wait and read it in the minutes.
You're going to have to give a report tomorrow morning, so.
Yeah.
So what, how, what is it, are we getting eight, eight thousand, nine thousand? I don't know.
Yeah, you got it?
I was just confirming my numbers.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have the numbers?
Do we have the numbers?
Yes. Would you, would you like me to?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so just to recap, Mayor Patino is putting her nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars towards Fighting Back, and so is Councilmember Cordero, he's putting his nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars towards Fighting Back. Councilmember Escobedo is putting his nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars to Independent Living Resource. And then to make, to, to get that agency up to fifteen thousand, Councilmember Waterfield will, will put in five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars to total fifteen thousand to ILRC. And then that leaves Councilmember Waterfield with three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which will go to Fighting Back.
Correct, okay.
Twenty-two, five for Fighting Back?
And then the fifteen thousand for IRL? Perfect.
So twenty-two, five for Fighting Back, fifteen for Independent Living? And that's it?
And Madam Mayor, I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Quick.
Okay.
Hey, whatever he says.
Okay, I'm sorry, we have a motion to...
And we have a second?
And Carlos seconded.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye, okay. Now we have council members' wishes for their public service allocations. We consider the overall public service allocations from the committee and council members, and its contingencies. Okay?
Yes.
So that's what you do now. So, do I have a motion?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? So this is to approve the service allocations and contingencies. So if not, Madam, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Got it? Okay.
The same, the same thing happened last year.
Every year, yeah.
Rosie, thank you, and to the committee for everything, oh my gosh, they're just terrific, yeah.
Please extend our thank yous to the committee.
Oh my gosh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
That is a tough job.
No kidding, it is a tough job.
Next, we have a public hearing, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider approving the Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal years 2022 through 2027.
And the report is made, is to be made by interim Director of Public Works, Mr. Foldoni.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and council members. Promise I have no complicated math for you this evening.
You better promise and keep your promise on that one.
So, it's a nice presentation on Measure A and its role in protecting critical infrastructure, or critical funding for the city's road and sidewalk infrastructure, is going to be the topic of discussion. We'll start with a brief history of the sales tax, review how Measure A fits into the overall city budget, and end with a discussion on the proposed five-year program of projects. So a little bit of background on Measure A. It was a one-half cent sales tax approved by voters back in 2008 for Santa Barbara County, approved by a seventy-nine percent majority in Santa Maria. The thirty, it's a thirty-year program that expires in 2040, and over a billion dollars for transportation and specific purposes countywide. Every community in Santa Barbara County supported Measure A by more than a two-thirds majority. In Santa Maria, Measure A, as I mentioned, let's see, sorry, I lost track. The logo is hiding my notes, I'm sorry. In, in addition to setting the tax rate, voters also approved an investment plan. This plan has three project categories. The named projects are funded off the top, using thirteen percent of total revenue, and the remainder is used to directly fund road maintenance in each community, North and South County. These road maintenance projects are programmed yearly in a document called the Program of Projects, or the POP. We'll be reviewing Santa Maria's road maintenance program, program of projects tonight. So here's a, a quick look at our annual street revenues, and how we fund our, our annual street maintenance. And so you can see that Measure A is our largest street revenue fund, and so, very important to us. Pavement Condition Index is currently at sixty-eight, and we currently have a deficit of four point five million to, in order to hold the PCI steady. And so, we're actually going to be bringing back to you a presentation on our PCI at a later date, so that we can have a discussion on that. But as you can see, just to keep our, our rates steady and keep our roads from failing even further, we're looking at a four point five million dollar deficit.
That's one of my most complaints for my constituents.
I'm sure.
Is, and, it's all about money.
So, the historical PCI has dropped by five points in the last five years, and the pavement management program contract for yearly ratings started in, in 2018. And so, the first year that we started receiving the SB one funds was in 2018. So moving on to the program of projects. The table on the screen shows the, the city's Measure A program of projects for the next five-year period. At the top, it shows the forecast of revenues and their totals for many carryovers. Carryovers being any monies not spent. Total revenues for the five-year period are... Total revenues for the five-year period are estimated to be thirty-four point four million, and the bottom section of the table shows these different programs and projects that will be funded with Measure A. In addition, it shows the actual expenditures from FY twenty twenty-one, and descriptions of these projects are as follows. So, we've got maintenance improvement, or construction of roadways and bridges, and so for this coming year, we're looking at four million ninety-two dollars. Landscaping maintenance, that's a new category. Traffic safety, signage replacements and improvements, pavement delineation, street lighting maintenance and improvements, street lighting upgrades in underlit neighborhoods, traffic signal maintenance and improvements, and so, for a total of five million five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one, and five point eight nine six million for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Before you go any further, I, I just want you to let the viewers know that that ARPA money that we received from the federal government, none of it could go to common sense things like this, and so, you know, and I'm sure all of the city council members get complaints about the street conditions in Santa Maria, which, if we could apply the ARPA money that we got, we could have taken care of all of that this year, but it's just a com, someone not having common sense and not allowing us to spend it in a wise way.
Point taken, thank you. Moving on, just to explain a little bit about the, how, how the funding is allocated, so we can allocate, eighty-five percent of this goes to our roadways, and then, we actually, fifteen percent of it needs to be spent on what's called alternative transportation, and so, next slide here. We'll go into a little bit about alternative transportation, so this is sidewalks primarily, and so, what we're talking about is, this next year, going back to the previous slide, is investing in maintenance, repair, construction, improvement of bike and pedestrian facilities, safe routes to school and ADA, and then there's also a proposed city, citywide sidewalk index that we'll be funding with this program in order to...
Excuse me, Mr. Fuldoni, we, with the PCI, we, it was at a certain rate, is there a, also a number for the, our, an index on our sidewalks?
That's what we're looking at doing. And so, that way, we can gather a whole, you know, view of what our sidewalks look like.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I mentioned, fifteen percent of the total funding is for alternative transportation, and so here's a, a brief summary of what that alternative transportation funding would look like over the next five years.
When, excuse me, sir, when you say alternative transportation, i- is that a real long list of things, or can you sum it up in just a couple of sentences? What is alternative transportation?
Sidewalks.
Just sidewalks?
Yeah, not cars, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's primarily sidewalks.
All right, thank you.
So, a question. We, the, sorry, where is the, the Caltrans, so that's the, the money that we're putting, allocating the, for the Measure U fund that we passed on the item, it's item, the Caltrans Clean California grant funding, that's part of that pot?
That, that's a good point, yeah, actually, part of the match for that will be leveraging these funds to use, to utilize that grant, so there's a, there's a matching component, and part of those funds are identified through Measure A, and so it allows us, you know, to utilize these funds to really leverage what we're able to do, so we're able to do a two-point-three million dollar project? Or, it's two point, I think, two point eight overall, two point five, two point eight overall, and just a small portion of that is using matching funds from Measure A, so.
Thank you.
So, real quick, just a couple of overviews of, you know, what our, what our, how our staff works and how we utilize these revenues, you know, we do, all of our road projects in one way or another are funded by this money, and so, you could be looking at, you know, the various overlays, different cracking, you know, cracked ceiling, doing dig-out repairs, fog sealing, chip sealing, all of the preventative, like to call preventative maintenance, so that we don't have to replace the road, so the maintenance, the maintenance money is very, very important for us to keep that PCI at a point where it will start to deteriorate, and then, for lack of a better term, it, it's unrecoverable, and so, like I said, we'll be coming back to you with a, an explanation of...
Absolutely.
Of all the pavement index in the future, so. Here's just another brief overview of some of the projects that were completed with this money. Concludes my presentation, if you have any more questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a comment, and...
Recommendations, so, excuse me, the recommendations are to hold a public hearing, take the public input on our local program of projects, and adopt a resolution approving the Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three through twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Any, any questions from the council?
I, I have a very strong recommendation, is that, in the budget, we need to find money for our roads, that has to be one of the next highest priorities, because we're getting more people in here, our roads are being traveled like crazy, and I don't think there's, other than the roads that have been completely done, and maybe for the last few years are, are good roads, but you see the wear and tear on everything anymore, and we've gotta, we've gotta find a way to put more money into that budget, to make sure that Santa Maria is, used to be the great place where our, our streets were wonderful, we used to brag about it.
Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the beginning, you mentioned that we need at least four million point, point five, just to keep it on the, on sixty-eight.
Wow.
Yeah.
Every year, that's, and if, if I may, the, the longer we wait to do that, the bigger the unfunded, like, it grows.
Absolutely.
It grows almost exponentially.
We just get behind and behind and behind, and we never catch up.
Because if, if you don't do the maintenance, it's akin to the siding on your house, if you don't paint your house, your siding's gonna rot, if your siding rots, your studs are gonna rot, now you gotta rebuild your wall, it's the same thing with roads. Gotta keep the paint on.
And a lot of that has to do with oil, and we know how quickly oil and gas and everything has risen, but yet, you take that same analogy, if you don't paint your house, and the paint goes up exponentially, to buy to paint your house, your house is still gonna deteriorate, so, we, we've just gotta find the funding to do this.
I know, and I, and I do agree with, with, because my, my Waterfield, I think it's a, it's one of the common requests in my district, the pavement, I mean, it's, it's a lot talking about Broadway and Main Street, which we're not, we don't have any jurisdiction, hopefully, they'll be fixed soon, because it, it just kills, so, so, yeah, I, I would like to see if we can look into the, what Ms. Waterfield just mentioned, trying to allocate a little bit, trying to find that, that money to, to make our roads don't look good, thank you.
I used to go to the SB CAG meetings and always tell everyone that our, our index was so high, it's, I don't even mention it anymore, but, especially Santa Barbara, they wish that their index, pavement index was as high as ours, but anyway. Any questions?
No.
Okay, I'll open this up to a public hearing, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council for any discussion and our motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we adopt a resolution approving the Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-seven, and certifying that the city of Santa Maria will provide sufficient funding in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget to meet Measure A maintenance of effort requirement, so...
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to add anything about looking into increasing the budget, or just later discussion?
Yeah, so I think, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield, so the action here is to make sure we're meeting our maintenance of effort requirement, and I hear direction from the council to work to keep our pavement management index higher...
Absolutely.
And find additional funds in the budget, and we are preparing the budget now, and we'll see if we can make progress toward that gap.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Oh, no, and no further discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Madam Mayor.
Aye. Next, we have a regular business item, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation from the community development department on the city's, city of Santa Maria and general plan housing element update.
And the staff report is to be made by community development director, Mr. Ring. And now we have a minority. We don't have a quorum.
A brief, momentary break might be appropriate.
Mr. Ring, I hate to see you sitting there and not paying attention to you, so we're going to start you off, so you can give your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I do. This is a presentation on the housing element, and I have about fifteen slides with my presentation, but I'm going to be fairly brief. The...I want to make some clarifications. So, as you may know, we're in the middle of a general plan update. The general plan update is the future planning effort for year 2045. The housing element is one chapter of the general plan. And we're having a meeting today. This is just informational, there's no votes required today. This is just a presentation to let you know that we are beginning the efforts on the housing element chapter. So again, this is one chapter of the general plan, but it's the one chapter that is state mandated. The state reviews this chapter. This is the chapter in the general plan that talks about how much housing we're going to plan for. The state requires cities to plan for housing, and there's an assigned number, which I'll get into in a moment. So, aside from everything else that we're doing for year 2045, there is a specific chapter of the general plan that state mandated, and there are numerous requirements that we're subject to. So I'm going to get into some of those details about the housing element of the general plan. This is just a list of all the different types of chapters within the general plan. Land use is a big one. When we talk about growth scenarios for year 2045, land use is the big one, but that's not the topic today. The topic is housing. So, other chapters include circulation, that's transportation, housing, conservation, open space, noise, safety, economic development. As mentioned, this is required by state law, and it's reviewed by State HCD, Housing and Community Development. We are entering what we call the sixth cycle. We just were finishing up the fifth cycle. All this refers to is when the housing element was first required by the state, and this goes back to the seventies and eighties. And what we're now in this sixth cycle, each cycle is about eight years. So, this upcoming year is for 2023 to 2031. So again, for clarification, our general plan effort goes out to 2045, housing elements to 2031. The housing element in and of itself, it's probably about a hundred pages. It'll talk about the current population and current housing. It evaluates our existing housing programs. And you will hear this acronym a lot, RHA, R-H-N-A, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The Regional Housing Needs Allocation is the number that is assigned to our city for the housing units that we have to plan for, for the next eight years. And in the housing element, there will be goals, objectives, policies, and programs. This is a...the outline or structure of a housing element. There's background information. There's information about the housing that we will need for the next eight years. It's information about our existing housing resources, and there will be a housing plan. The housing element will have a large appendices section with a lot of technical data. I'm not going to go into detail about what each of these items are. Just know that there's a lot of information that goes into the housing element appendices. So again, tying this back to the larger general plan, you had seen the general plan vision and guiding principles. This went before the council last year, and I included it here because I wanted to remind you that this was something that was already discussed. We talk about Santa Maria in 2045 as a community where families can establish and maintain multi-generational roots. It's close-knit, culturally diverse, and economically inclusive. This is possible in part because Santa Maria offers affordable, safe, attractive, and healthy homes and neighborhoods for our residents. So, we have a vision. This will be broken down into more specific goals, objectives, policies, and programs. So as we begin to develop the housing element, those goals and policies will be developed in light of this vision that was previously established. I'm not going to get into details about all the different new legislation. Just know that there's always state mandates for housing. You know, here's ten of them, and we're always working within those statutes.
That's why there's no affordable housing.
So, getting back to this regional needs housing allocation, RHA. The state calculates the statewide housing needs. So statewide, it's a large number, and they're distributed for the different regions. And the RHA projection accommodates and anticipates demand for additional housing units for all income levels. So, there's a slide that's upcoming that tells us the number that we need to plan for. And again, the housing element, we're not required to build it, we're required to plan for it, meaning to provide the land. So, we've had conversations with the different jurisdictions within Santa Barbara County, and we've been speaking with SB CAG. And for 2023 to 2031, the Santa Barbara County region had a RHA number of 24,856. So, to 2031, that's the number that the county is responsible for, to be divided up between Santa Barbara, the county, the eight different jurisdictions within the county. I'll show you our share of the 24,856. This is our share, so it's highlighted in the gray. Out of the 24,000, we are responsible for 5,418. This is for the next eight years, to 2031. It's broken into four different income categories. About 1,000 in a very low category, 536 in a low category, 731, and about 3,000 for the above moderate. This is pretty similar to our last housing element cycle. You may notice that, you know, if you look at the different jurisdictions, Santa Barbara is responsible for 8,000, we're responsible for 5,400. But again, this is what we are to plan for, for the next eight years. This is just a slide that talks about what affordable is. So, it's based on average median income. Low income is thirty to fifty percent average median income. You can be a family of four and make up to $100,000 and still be considered low income for Santa Barbara County. So, it's...sometimes affordable housing is not what we think it is. Affordable housing can actually be housing for teachers, medical professionals, so on and so forth. What are affordable rents? This is just a table that lays out affordable rents. So, the timeline that we have, this is...so we're in the middle of the general plan effort, and within the general plan work, we're working on this housing element. This is a state deadline. It's not our deadline, this is a state deadline. They're due in February 2023, less than a year from now. There is a grace period of 120 days, I think, that gives us up to June 2023. So, it's really the work of the next year or so. This is a more specific schedule. We're working on this now. We have a consultant that we're working with, Lisa Weiss Consulting. I'll mention that Frank Galbraith is here, Frank Galbraith, Principal Planner. He's the project manager. And so there's a lot of work in the next year or so. And this is in parallel with the general plan effort. So we're working on our general plan, we're working on our housing element, which is part of the general plan. We're going to talk about 2045, and we're going to talk about 2031. 2045, I think I may have mentioned this previously, we're planning for up to 15,000, 16,000 housing units. 2031, we're planning for the 5,400. And you can think of 2045 as the next three housing element cycles. So, the timeline that we have, this is...so we're in the middle of the general plan effort, and within the general plan work, we're working on this housing element. This is a state deadline. It's not our deadline, this is a state deadline. They're due in February 2023, less than a year from now. There is a grace period of 120 days, I think, that gives us up to June 2023. So, it's really the work of the next year or so. This is a more specific schedule. We're working on this now. We have a consultant that we're working with, Lisa Weiss Consulting. I'll mention that Frank Galbraith is here, Frank Galbraith, Principal Planner. He's the project manager. And so there's a lot of work in the next year or so. And this is in parallel with the general plan effort. So we're working on our general plan, we're working on our housing element, which is part of the general plan. We're going to talk about 2045, and we're going to talk about 2031. 2045, I think I may have mentioned this previously, we're planning for up to 15,000, 16,000 housing units. 2031, we're planning for the 5,400. And you can think of 2045 as the next three housing element cycles. That's the last slide. So, that's information about the housing element. We're getting started. It's going to be a lot of work for us in this next year. We're responsible for planning 5,400 housing units. And I just...in terms of progress, for the last housing element cycle, we hit about half that number for eight years. We issue roughly 300 permits per year for housing. So, for eight years, about 2,000 to 3,000. I'll just say that lately, we've been issuing a lot of permits for ADUs, accessory dwelling units, a lot of them. So, good news is that we can count it. We can count the ADUs towards our RHA allocation. Although, you know, we are feeling some impacts in our neighborhoods with all the ADUs that are under construction, but we can at least count them towards our RHA numbers. So this concludes the presentation. Welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Any questions of the council?
What was the number...I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Ring, I happen to have a conversation with somebody regarding an H2A project. How does H2A residents factor into our RHA numbers? If we put in an H2A unit with 200 people that it can accommodate, do those numbers factor in?
Any residential units, any would count.
Okay.
My question is, how many homes do we have to have by 2043?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Waterfield, our target projection for...did you say 2023?
2043, I'm sorry.
2043, our target year is 2045.
Okay.
We're planning up to 16,000 housing units, roughly. There's a couple thousand that's already in the pipeline. So, we have projects in the pipeline, such as the southeast plaza on the Quistapachi property, and there's others that's already approved but not yet built. So, but if you include those and what we call opportunity sites, vacant land that could accommodate housing, it's about 16,000 housing units.
We're looking at annexation, too.
It's a lot of housing units.
Yes, yep, we're looking at...just good.
Any other questions? Okay, Madam Kirk, do we have any requests to speak or written communications?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for any further discussion, and...
This is just for receive and file.
Yep, and it's receive and file. You know what, Mr. Stillwell, I was just wondering, because this might give us a great opportunity to do town hall meetings in each one of our quadrants. Because, you know, as we meet with people that want to do projects and develop, I'm hearing things that I don't necessarily agree with, that they're talking about, and it might be a good idea to go out to the different... I said, the different quadrants in the city, and ask the people what they want in housing. Do they want apartments? Do they want townhouses? Do they want single-family housing? Go ahead, Mr. Cordiero.
Madam Mayor, when you say that, are you talking about an additional meeting or a meeting in lieu of a council meeting?
No, additional, just town hall meetings, yeah.
Just a town hall...because I prefer that. I think that...
Oh, yeah, it's much more productive.
You know, the dialogue can be different, it's not as structured.
Yeah.
And people don't feel pressured, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll work on those. I think, as Director Ring mentioned, I mean, 16,000 new houses coming, the ADUs changing community character, the state requiring housing that the city doesn't have discretion over. Those are big things that I think the community would want to discuss with the council. We can invite the Planning Commission and hold them in the quadrants in the four areas and work to do that later this spring, early summer, is what you're thinking?
That'd be fine.
Yeah, okay.
Be great.
Okay, next item is a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the next meeting of the City Council is April 19th. A couple...so one item of note on the consent is we are working, per the council's direction, on a feasibility study of updating the landscape lighting district. And so we'll have an agreement to do that work. And we have two public hearings, one to comply with the new state law about the military equipment the city has. All cities have to do that. And we have a Tefra hearing for Centennial Square Apartments for funding of that project. And then the regular business item is the approval of the local roadway safety plan, which if we can...if the council's able to adopt that, then it'll allow us to be able to pursue certain grants. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll get reports from council members. And Mr. Cordiero, shall we start with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 16th, I attended an opening and spoke at the Sheriff's Department on behalf of Sheriff Bill Brown. On the 17th, I attended a lunch out at Vandenberg Space Force. That was a very interesting meeting, and happened to partner up with the city attorney while we were out there, and talked to somebody to try to get them to maybe communicate with Mr. Chun, because one of the things that they very first spoke about is, "We want to do something, but we don't have any housing." And people are saying, "Well, I don't want to come over here and live on base housing. If there's no housing, I'll go someplace else." So, I left a business card, and I was fortunate enough to have Tom to back me up there a little bit, and hopefully we get some feedback from the base, and we're able to do something that they can work with you and figure out what might be in the pipeline for two years, three years from now. On the 18th, and it's...this wasn't planned this way, but I met with the AmeriCorps members from United Way, and we did the same tour that you did, Madam Mayor, underneath the 101. And it's kind of a depressing occurrence to go over there and interact with these people, but I was surprised. You know, my police days came back, and I was kind of prepared to enter into conflict, and I was really surprised on how nice some of these people were and how they treated the AmeriCorps workers. But it had no lack for filth. It was in pretty poor shape. I was kind of impressed with a shower that they got, like a camping shower that they had down there that they could use under the bridge. And they were pretty well accommodated. I thought, you know, they have the same territorial things that you and I would have in our neighborhoods. Like, I live here in this part, and you don't live here, so get out of my area. So it was interesting to see how they worked. I also met with the Maldonado family. They want to work with putting in a large H2A project. They were very complimentary of you, Mr. Chun. And they've got a good plan, I think, that they're working on, but it's conceptual at this time. There's no...I haven't seen any paperwork, and it's in a spot where we could certainly use some development down there on South Blosser. It's where the old Benita Pacheco was. And then on the 24th, I attended the CCWA meeting down in Buellton. I have to say that that's a very interesting, a very complex, and a very important aspect that Ms. Waterfield is involved in as our representative. It was very, very interesting to see what they're doing and learn more about the water distribution, water acquisition, storage. It's just so complex. And then, some of you may not know this, but the city has now entered into a partnership with the Elks, and we're participating in the student of the month. Two, sometimes three, but two students get recognized. It's unbelievable, these kids get recognized for having a score... excuse me, a grade point average of 4.5. And I'm thinking, "How do you get that?" I mean, 4.0 is an A, you know, so they have a way of doing it. My wife tried to explain it to me, it was too complex. And...but this meeting that takes place when they do it, because many of the kids aren't members, they do it at a meeting night, and they do it before the meeting, so that they can...that the Elk rules allow them to bring somebody in there that's not a member. Like, Joni's the member, right? And you're the spouse, so you wouldn't be able to go into the meeting. But if any of us, as councilpeople, want to go in there and stand there and present the certificate, that option is open to you if you want. I've chosen not to. I got involved with it, and I take the certificates down there, but I've left it...I mean, it's about honoring and recognizing the kids. But anybody, any council member that would like to show up, if they let me know, then I'll be glad to make that arrangement and give you the dates and times that you can go and shake hands with the kids, take a picture, this kind of thing, and that's what it's about. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 18th, I attend a worship of business opportunities and importation of products from Mexico to the U.S., presented by the Mexican Embassy in Oxnard at the San Peters Episcopal Church. This was in partnership with the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce and La Buena Radio Station, and it was really well attended. It was a lot of great information, how you can, you know, start your business. You know, just...I think it was well presented, and the vibe was really positive. And I'd like to recognize, again, San Peters Episcopal Church for hosting, the Embassy of Mexico, and the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, and La Buena for putting this... event together. On March 23rd, I, I attended the presentation of the new Santa Maria, Santa Maria Bonita School, School District Superintendent, Dr. Darrell McDuffin, great guy, and I wish him the best on this huge, huge responsibility. In April, yesterday, on April 4th, I attend the human trafficking in Santa Maria presentation. This was presented by one of our Santa Maria Police Department investigator and the deputy district attorney. This was hosted by my club, Santa Maria Rotary Club of Santa Maria South. What can I say? It just, it was a really eye-opening presentation, and it was, you know, it's one of those issues that we don't see, but they're there, they're happening, and it affects all of us. And I think that we need, the goal is to at least raise awareness, and they present some recommendations of how to identify somebody who's going through human trafficking, identify some marks and attitudes, things that they might, you know, knew stuff. So I think it was really well presented, and I, I know that she's not expecting this, but I would like to make a special recognition to Lisa Long, because she was the, the main lead. She put a lot of, a lot of her time and effort on this. And I would like to recognize the club, my club. And, and also, I'd like the opportunity to invite everybody who would like to know more about this. We have another presentation on Monday, April 18th, at 6:00 PM at the Santa Maria Inn. You'll need to register on the event. You can find it on our website or our Facebook, the Santa Maria Rotary Club of South, Santa Maria. Thank you.
So since you mentioned Lisa Long's name, does she get to, does she get penalized with a fine? You gotta be careful. I have no report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. March 16th, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. On the March 17th, I attended SB CAG monthly board meeting in the morning, and then APCD board meeting in the afternoon. On the 23rd, I went down to Buellton. Sheriff Bill Brown is putting together a regional plan and attempt by the, the whole county of Santa Barbara. It's called Project Opioid, and to deal with the opioid crisis that we, we have here, certainly, as I'm sure our, our police chief knows, the, the problem with fentanyl in our community. I attended the Marion Foundation Board of Directors. Later, I attended the Light of Hope Community Event with CASA. And all, well, I know you weren't able to attend, Councilmember Waterfield, but four of us did attend the superintendent reception at the Santa Maria Benita School District of Dr. McDuffie. And I want to let you know, the one thing he said, he hadn't been in Santa Maria long, but he loved it here because there wasn't any traffic. So March 30th, did the LCAP Collaboration Team Meeting, and on the 1st, I attended the Special Library Ad Hoc Meeting. On last Saturday, on 1st of April, I attended a, it was a discussion I wanted to hear about Alzheimer's at the Muscle Center. I was surprised there weren't more people there, because I think there was probably just nine of us there. On the 5th, I did the Ben Hayes, oh, yesterday, on the 4th, I did, I attended the human trafficking meeting that the Rotary Club South put on at, at the Santa Maria Inn. And one of our police officers was there, and everyone was, was very engaged and enjoyed the meeting because it was very informative. And then today, I did the Ben Hayes Show and went out to the Government Center where they did the Sixth Annual Pinwheel for Awareness for Child Abuse Month. And that is it. Any other things from the city?
Madam Mayor, did you happen to talk to the new superintendent's wife?
I did.
Nice lady.
I think your wife, you or your wife introduced me.
Oh, yes, you did.
You know, actually, your wife actually introduced me.
And if I could find my, I don't think my gal is even here. Anyway, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.